Great, thank you so much Kate, welcome everybody. Good things always come when we start with Dolly Parton, so I'm feeling particularly happy about Kate's choice of music today. Welcome everybody to the Pro Choice check-in. My name is Rebecca Hartholder. For those of you who don't already know me, I'm so excited that we have so many people joining us today. I can see the numbers climbing. We knew this would be a well-attended Pro Choice check-in and we're so glad to have everybody here. Last week, we had a great conversation with Annabelle Santiago from the Coalition for Social Justice and Raise Up Massachusetts where we discussed the efforts to expand emergency paid sick leave during the COVID-19 pandemic here in Massachusetts. If you couldn't attend, don't worry, all of our check-ins are now available on YouTube and the links should be in the chat box right now. So some quick housekeeping, if you've been here before, this is the moment to go grab your coffee or your tea because you know the drill. If you haven't, just a quick couple things because we're using webinar mode, the video and audio feeds are muted for everybody except our panelists. We've done this because of the spread of Zoom bombing. We would so much rather see all of your faces, but don't worry, we're still going to make this an interactive session. So Kate Freilich is working behind the scenes to make it like really interactive. Big thanks to her. To the right of your screen, you can find the chat box. If you're experiencing any technical issues, please use the chat box to let us know and we will do our best to help. In the middle of your screen towards the bottom, you'll see a question and answer icon. If you have questions for our special guests throughout our conversation, you can submit them there. We'll be saving all the questions for the end and Kate will come back on the screen and facilitate the Q and A. And I also want to remind everyone to follow us on social media. You can find links to our Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram in the chat box. It's the best way to stay up to date about future events, upcoming check-ins, and important updates and announcements about reproductive freedom in Massachusetts. I usually start these check-ins with a warning that one of my two kids might make an unexpected guest appearance because I'm sharing childcare duties with my wife. And the decor behind me is probably a giveaway that I have taken over my daughter's room and she's not thrilled about that. So you may see an angry five-year-old come in here at some point in the next hour in search of a fairy or a unicorn or stuffy or something. But that feels appropriate given what we're talking about today. So you know, when we were conceiving of this Pro Choice check-in, we really wanted to make clear to the membership that we support and our constituents that reproductive freedom is not only about the ability to decide if and when to have a family, it's also about ensuring that when you decide to become a parent, you're able to raise a family in a safe and healthy environment without risking your job to care for your family and without breaking the bank to afford childcare. The juggling act of balancing working from home and childcare duty is the new normal for many parents with schools and childcare centers closed because of COVID-19. I know I feel like I have about a million glass balls in the air that are about to break at any moment. But for many families in Massachusetts, juggling work and childcare duties just isn't new. Reliable, high-quality childcare is inaccessible to many. And as I was prepping for this conversation, this fact really stood out to me that I wanted to share with everybody, which is that according to 2009 data from the Economic Policy Institute, the average annual cost of infant care in Massachusetts is almost $21,000 a year. And childcare for a four-year-old will run you just over $15,000. And in fact, Massachusetts ranks second in the nation for most expensive childcare, just behind Washington DC. And couple that with the fact that the US Department of Health and Human Services considers childcare affordable if it costs no more than 7% of a family's income. Based on this metric, only about 5.4% of Bay State families can even afford childcare. These high costs exacerbate inequalities in our state because low-wage workers struggle to find affordable care or they simply can't afford it, meaning that many have to choose between making a living or caring for their family. And it doesn't only impact working parents, but also their children. Numerous studies show that high-quality childcare is critical to supporting early childhood development and leads to positive outcomes later in life. And again, in my research, really interesting data out of Oklahoma where there's 20 years' worth of really interesting data about the long-term impact, positive impact of universal pre-K. So with that, I'll just do a very brief introduction of our two guests today, Boston City Councilor Michelle Wu and Lauren Birchfield Kennedy, co-founder of Neighborhood Villages, and then we'll dive in. So Michelle Wu was first elected to the Boston City Council in 2013, and in 2016, she became the first woman of color to serve as council president after a unanimous vote by her colleagues. She was also the first counselor and council president to give birth while in office, a fact that shocked me, and is proud that her two sons will only know a world where moms lead. Councilor Wu has been the lead sponsor of Boston's Paid Parental Leave Ordinance and Healthcare Equity Ordinance, which prohibited discrimination based on gender identity, both of which passed unanimously through the council and were signed into law by Mayor Walsh. A longtime advocate for her community, she's transformed her passion for service into legislative work that focuses on expanding access to opportunity for residents of all backgrounds. And Lauren Birchfield Kennedy is the co-founder of Neighborhood Villages, a local nonprofit that works to improve access to affordable, high-quality childcare and early education by using a community-based approach to bolster childcare networks and support families with young children. Prior to co-founding Neighborhood Villages, Lauren was the Director of Health Policy at the National Partnership for Women and Families in Washington DC. She's worked extensively on health policy at both the state and federal levels. She's an expert on the ACA and Medicare and Medicaid policy. She's also held senior positions at Boston Medical Center, NARL Pro Choice America, where we became friends, and the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts Foundation. And like many of us here, Lauren is the mother of two young kids and understands full well the challenges of balancing work and family. So welcome to both of you. Thank you for taking an hour out of your really busy days. I really appreciate having you here. So I think, let's, I just wanted to kind of start on a personal note and just say, you know, the struggle to balance work and children in my household is really intense. We're on like, you should see our calendar. It's like some mornings I'm on, some mornings my wife is on, and you know, my poor colleagues are, I think they probably think it's like a constant moving ball. And I'm just curious how you're both holding up as working parents right now?
I mean, I think sort of, you know, if you were saying, how's it going? I just keep answering, you know, one foot in front of the other, one day at a time. Some days are better than other days. Also, you know, going to put out the warning that we may be joined by one or both kids because, you know, you think you've got them occupied and then they break free and join you on, you know, different platforms like this. So, you know, just trying to be gentle on ourselves as parents and enjoy kind of hearing the stories of other people who are going through it right now because we're all in this together.
Yeah, today has been a particular struggle for me. I, you know, I'm glad that everyone can only see a little bit of the background. There's an incredible mess pulled all around my feet over here. I had, I guess, it has felt, especially in the last week, two weeks, because my husband had to start going back into work. So I've been solo at home with both kids and trying to do the work juggle that I haven't felt this stressed and, you know, incredibly lucky and blessed to be able to work from home and, you know, have the flexibility and schedule and resources. But it just struck me that this is like when I had to commute with both kids on the T, that you kind of have to get everything exactly right. It's just one little kind of missed transition or the link for my son's Zoom class isn't working right, or they've changed the time slightly and I didn't realize it and just kind of everything goes up in the air. And so I had a moment earlier where I had to do a quick video thing. And so I went into the room and was like quickly doing my hair and makeup because I had five minutes to do it. And then somehow in that five minutes, by the time I came back to this room where we tried to like film everything and keep everything separate, the kids had managed to, you know, the like chair in the back was totally upside down. All the games were pulled down over the shelf. There are still connect four pieces all over the ground over here. And that's just the day-to-day. And there are so many families and constituents that I hear from for whom, you know, being able to stay at home would be such a luxury. So it is impossible what we are putting everyone through right now. And I hope, if anything else, that we are seeing how interconnected we all are to each other, that every single person's health and wellbeing and stability affects every other person's, and that we have to really take the time and fix some of these deep structural issues that were far predated COVID, including access to childcare.
Yeah, and I want to, I actually would love to start in the kind of pre-COVID world. And Lauren, I'll throw this to you first because I think it's really important context. I'm hoping that you could just describe a little bit the pre-COVID childcare landscape in Massachusetts and tell us about Neighborhood Villages and kind of why you feel so passionately about it.
Sure. So Neighborhood Villages takes, as Rebecca mentioned, a community-based approach to bolstering childcare landscapes in the greater Boston area and also through high-impact policy work, looks to pair the two to really reform the entirety of the state's early education and childcare sector. Because what we've known for a long time but has long gone dismissed is just how fragile and fractured the field is despite the fact that we know it's essential to the lives of families, particularly working parents. So now that we're in this moment of COVID and sort of everything has melted down around us, the good news is we're seeing more attention paid to it. But what we need to make sure as we look forward is that we build a stronger and more equitable system going forward that works for all families because what we had before, we really can't stand for anymore. Pre-COVID, what we were looking at was, you know, as Rebecca mentioned, sky-high tuition rates and that, you know, the average across the state being about $20,000. If you were living in the Boston area, for an infant is closer to $30,000. You add another child on top of it and all of a sudden, you're looking at $40,000 every single year, more expensive than sending your child to in-state college here in Massachusetts. But it's a college tuition that you didn't have 18 years to save for. So incredibly expensive. Then even if you can afford it, could you find it? A significant issue in Massachusetts and nationally are that there just aren't enough providers in the field to offer childcare, whether that's family childcare providers or center-based care. It can be very difficult to find an open space for your child. And part of then, that reason is because while you're paying, you're asking a family to pay tuition of $20,000 a year as a provider of childcare, that still doesn't come close to covering the cost to you as a provider of offering quality care. And so what the result was is that providers, they didn't want to have to do this, but in Massachusetts and nationally, they were only able to pay their early educators minimum wage or slightly above. So you also had a lot of workforce shortage, a lot of churn, and really exploitation of a workforce that stands up this incredibly important infrastructure for working families. And then the last thing I'll note is just that kind of pre-COVID, we were all still sort of in this kind of social mindset that this was every individual family's problem to solve, again, despite what we knew about how 80% of parents were in the workforce, more than 60% of children in non-parental childcare arrangements. If we were failing to recognize it as a collective issue then, we certainly are aware of it now. And as we move forward and build a stronger, more equitable system, we need to think of it as a public good and a collective investment. Because if we fail to do that, then we are going to be setting ourselves up for a highly inequitable future for parents and for those looking to make decisions about the families that they want to have.
Yeah, I, you know, at one point, my wife and I were paying, the three of us have kids all the same age. And I mean, we were paying $45,000 a year for care for our kids. And I remember very clearly, one of my daughter's preschool providers like walked in one day and she was so happy. And I said, what's going on? And she said, I'm so excited. I just qualified for Section 8 housing. And I was just like floored by that. I mean, the inequity is just so shocking to me when you, you know, when I just hadn't thought about it before. And I think that was what really kind of flipped a switch on for me. So obviously, you know, I guess, the terrifying part for me when everything shut down was that we lost our childcare and kind of the rug was pulled out from under our kids' feet and our feet all of a sudden. But the good part was that it happened to all of us at once. It wasn't one individual family going through it. And I think, Lauren, to your point, like that speaks to the kind of reimagining of childcare as a public good. And Councilor, I'd love to hear kind of what you're hearing from constituents about the impact of the loss of childcare on working parents.
It's, I think it's just present in every moment of our lives right now. And no matter what we, work arrangements, we are trying to adapt with, whether it's sort of switching schedules with a partner, if someone else, if there's another adult at home, or trying to, you know, wake up really early to get a little bit in before you have to take on the role of administering, you know, remote learning for the kids. It's incredibly stressful, you know, and certainly the experience is different for parents of kids at different stages in life. I hear from a lot of parents, kids who are a little bit more independent, that the worry is now, you know, what happens next if sort of the minimum standard is keeping kids engaged a little bit in school and it's, what are they going to do if they need to be making certain grades next year or applying for school or thinking about next steps, all the way down to kind of the age of our kids where every minute is a potential new delight or disaster, you know, the eggs are Sunday all over the floor. I hear a lot from our teachers, you know, we are now having to administer school and connect all of our young people in our house to their teachers remotely. But the teachers are also having to try to take care of their own kids who are at home as well. And the incredible burden and stress that that brings on every single person. And then there are many, many families who aren't at home, where the adults aren't at home. I think, you know, the Globe had an incredibly powerful piece about July, a 15-year-old student in Dorchester who is taking care of her three-year-old sister. And her mom is an essential worker and has to go in. And, you know, we see so many of the communities who are already struggling with access to staple housing or benefits and decent wages now bearing so much of this pandemic from the public health angle, from the economic angle, being excluded from relief as well. So I think, you know, just echoing Lauren's points about really wanting to make sure that we're taking the time now to address deep structural issues so that the recovery is equitable.
And question for both of you, you raised the essential workers piece. I mean, that's a part that I have been thinking about a lot as I feel a huge amount of gratitude that I can even still go to the grocery store and get my groceries. You know, what are essential workers doing? I mean, what have you been hearing about how they're cobbling care together if suddenly their family daycare has shut down or the center that they were going to has shut down?
Go ahead, Lauren.
I think what I was gonna just sort of say as an upside is that the state did set up an emergency childcare system to try to respond to this as quickly as possible and ensure that essential workers did have access to care. However, you do capacity for emergency childcare is probably limited. So whether essential workers are able to access that or not, whether there's been enough sort of public communication and that it's there as a resource probably remains a question and probably is a different across different communities. What we've heard is when, when individuals, you know, were told that the childcare system was shutting down, they were an essential worker, but they didn't necessarily realize that they were eligible to enroll their children in emergency care programs. So I'm sure as the lockdown has continued, I think there's been greater communication around the options that are available to essential workers. But I'm sure that, you know, as any of us as parents are probably, you know, fearful for what being in a group care setting means for them and their children. And again, the state is doing everything that it can to ensure that those are safe environments for both educators and for children. But for all of the stress that we are feeling around childcare, you know, as you both have mentioned, it's in some ways a blessing to have the choice to have your child at home. And if you are being called to the front lines, we should of course be doing everything we can to make sure that we are alleviating as much distress as we can around what it means to need childcare right now in this moment.
Well, and I've been thinking a lot about the kids too, who all of a sudden are taken from the teacher or the childcare provider that they know that is a reliable and safe place in their life. I mean, I know our son, our two-year-old, every time he sees his childcare, his family daycare provider on FaceTime, who he thinks her name is Amor Mio, my love, in Spanish, he just calls her Amor Mio. He just ends up in a puddle of tears afterwards, you know, he's so sad. And I think a lot about kids who suddenly were going to, you know, one place consistently and all of a sudden, you know, thank goodness, there are these emergency childcare centers, but these are brand-new people that kids don't know and families don't know. And what a incredibly difficult transition that is and the impact on the kids, I really have been thinking about a lot too.
Yeah, I was speaking with one of my friends who is running one of these, you know, has an in-home daycare and has now been running an emergency childcare site. And you know, many of the rules and the protocols that have been issued are, you know, maybe feel like they weren't necessarily crafted with childcare providers at the table. It's difficult to keep two-year-olds six feet apart from each other at all times, right? And it feels scary and impersonal when, as you were saying, Rebecca, you know, you're meeting kids brand-new because they were used to going somewhere else. And all of a sudden, you're supposed to be in a mask all day when they're little and that, you know, what does that mean? So I think, you know, I, I've been thinking about that a lot just as a parent. What does it mean for the sort of people that we're forming now that every time they step outside the house and see a stranger, they're being taught they have to kind of shield up and not be, get too close to anyone? What will that mean for their psyches? And I've gotten some great feedback online and people are mostly saying, you know, it, don't worry. And there's ways to explain it. There's some amazing books and local authors who have, you know, created some ways to help connect their children directly about it. But little kids, you know, big kids, but little kids especially absorb a lot of this. They absorb what the adults around them are feeling. And I think, you know, as we think about the childcare situation, it's not just about the direct provision of care and them having their physical needs met, but it's also about this sort of emotional and mental strain on the adults around them in their lives. And what are they feeling now? What kind of, you know, latent trauma might they be experiencing now? And how can we ensure that moving forward, as we move into a recovery, we are addressing the mental health impacts of all this too?
That's a really important point.
And maybe just, I mean, I would add to, again, kind of riff off, what does the future need to look like? Is as we approach reopening of childcare programs, is to, you know, frankly, really put our money and our political power behind what we've been saying now over the last few months, that childcare workers are essential workers, that childcare programs are core to the infrastructure of our economy and the health of our state. And say if essential work, if childcare workers are essential workers, that they deserve to go back to incredibly safe environments. So as we reopen, let's make sure we give the system the funds it needs to ensure that those classrooms are safe environments for the educators who are going back and then certainly for the children who be enrolled in those programs. But also start to have a real conversation around how do we do right by our childcare providers going forward. It's not okay that they've been underpaid for this long. This is our moment to really stand in solidarity with the people who help us raise our children and say, it's time for you to be treated as the teacher that you are. You know, Rebecca, we've had the same experience with our daughter, that she only wants to do Zoom preschool every other day or so because it's really hard for her to see the teachers that she loves so much and not be able to interact with them in person, which is again, just a long-winded way of saying, as we build a stronger childcare sector going forward, we need to make sure that we are investing in the salaries for early educators, that we're investing in their professional development, that we are truly teaching, sorry, treating them as the incredibly valued teachers that they are. To do that right then says, well, we really then have to look at a system as a whole. Because to raise the salaries, which is what we should do, is going to raise the cost of childcare and we cannot pass that off onto families. So again, if we are talking about this as a collective good, a public good, it's time to start financing it that way with greater public investment.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I was reading the press release that Representative Clark's office put out about the legislation that she's pushing to kind of bail out the childcare industry. And they cited this statistic that's from the Bipartisan Policy Center that said, 60% of licensed childcare providers, this is nationally, have already closed due to the pandemic. And a survey from the National Association of Education of Young Children shows that only 11% of our nation's childcare providers are going to survive without government support, which is an astounding figure, especially when you think about how hard it already is in a city like Boston to find childcare. I mean, we searched for months. I'm sure you guys were in the same, you know, the same position. It is so extraordinarily difficult to find infant care. And I'm just curious, like, how do we help providers in all of this? Like, what is it that we need to do? Is it tax credits? I mean, how do we really get to the core structural issues here? And, you know, important to note, at least in Boston, it's disproportionately impacting people of color, women of color, who are providing care for our children.
Absolutely. And, you know, we've seen gains and I know Lauren's been a driving force in this as well, in terms of expanding Boston's mixed delivery system where there's a partnership between the school district, the Boston Public Schools, and various community sites. Still, even as we're getting closer to technically having a seat for every four-year-old within the Boston Public School system, whether that seat is in a school or at one of the community sites, there are still incredible inequities across the board. Not every, not each one of these seats is available through the school lottery. And so for families who don't happen to know about that community seat, they still aren't able to, you know, we still have an incredibly long waitlist. Every time we register for three and four-year-old seats for Boston Public Schools, we also know that it's also created situations where even within the same community-based site, there are some classrooms that are now these, you know, pre-K classrooms that are funded with, to have the same curriculum as the K1 seats and BPS, to have pay scales that are closer to a BPS salary, which is what everyone deserves. But then even within that same center, there are other classrooms that aren't same hours, same pay, same curriculum. So it really needs to get to the point where it is truly universal and not just kind of saying that we've hit a certain number, but that anyone who wants access, it is truly that public good, that we don't, they don't have to worry about how to overcome barriers to get there.
And so as a real novice on this issue, like, what are the policy solutions? Like, how do we implement, I think, the vision that we all share for childcare really being a public good?
This is an oversimplification, but it really requires a huge infusion of public dollars. And it's time that we admit that and it's time that we organize around it and really, you know, see it implemented in public policy. And I say that because when we look at our childcare system as it stood, this emergency moment that we're in, and then as we go forward, is that we've had a huge equity and access problem. So, you know, as we talked about access being, could you afford it? If you could afford it, could you find it? We need to solve for access and a big part of that is reducing the cost of care to families so that more people have access to the system. However, we also have had huge inequities in quality. And so it's not just a matter of allowing more people to come into a system, it's also making sure that we're doing right by children and making sure that there's equity in the early learning programs that they'll be participating in. And to ensure that we have equity and quality, again, right, it's raising teacher salaries, it's giving the sector the resources it needs to have the right materials in the classroom, right, to be able to do facilities upgrades so that that early learning program is as nurturing and as rich as it possibly can be. And like in any other sort of sector, industry, if you're going to raise the quality of the product and ensure that more programs are at that quality level, then you've increased the price of the product. So if you need to actually decrease the amount that you're asking a family to pay, the only solution is that you have government come in and say that because this is a public good for children, because this is a public necessity for parents, we are going to step in and make a collective investment in this sector and subsidize the full spectrum of families who are in need of financial help in order to make sure that their children are enrolled in high-quality early learning programs and able to go to work, maintain financial security, and have opportunity for economic upward mobility. and able to go to work, maintain financial security and have opportunity for economic upward mobility.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, I, I was just going to add that, you know, obviously at the city level, we are always pushing for more funding from federal and state sources. And, and there has been increasing share of city resources going to that as well. But even just from a, a sort of very immediately doable baseline of having all of the information about what is out there. It has, you know, year after year, we have a conversation about that families, you know, as Lauren's saying, don't know where to find quality care. And we should have some, whether it's city organized or in partnership with UMass Boston or one of our academic institutions or another partner. Really, we should know where exactly is every place that is offering some sort of care? What is the, you know, private, public, in-home, community-based? And then get a sense of, you know, having all of the requirements met in each one of those places. Is it safe? Is it high quality? What curriculum, hours, et cetera? To be able to then say, okay, where are the gaps? And those could be geographic gaps, those could be language gaps. I think once we can really say, where are we now? What are we aiming for? Then we can define how much money, what, you know, what scale of resources do we need?
And I think what's exciting about sort of what we've been talking about in this conversation is that this isn't, you know, something that's being cooked up in a vacuum, right? Or it's not something you have to look to Denmark to sort of point to and say, there's a blueprint for the future. We already run an affordable, high-quality childcare and after-school program in this country in our US military. So the Department of Defense said, to make sure that our men and women of uniform are ready to deploy and that their families are taken care of, we are going to say that this is a wise investment to stand up a childcare program that has huge, like, it's the five-star kind of quality benchmark that people point to. 90% of all of the different programs participating in it are NACI accredited compared to like 10% of providers in the kind of usual civilian market. And it's highly affordable to families because they use a sliding scale tuition fee that's based on your household income. So we know we can do this here in the United States. We've been doing it. It's really just the point of how do we translate the political will to offer this to American, you know, families across the board, families in America. And, you know, not to, to yell from my soapbox too loudly, but like, this is the moment, right? They're all in this feeling it together. And we have the ear of, of government. We have the ear of, of the, the business employer community to say that this is the best investment that you can make in your human infrastructure right now. Whether that's parents who are going to work and looking to get, you know, back to those jobs and get the economy back up and running, to the investment that we're making in the next generation. That all of the academic research tells us, if you participate in high-quality early learning programs from birth to five, you have greater education achievement, greater employment earnings opportunities down the line, as well as, you know, lower rates of incarceration. And to bring it back to, you know, reproductive freedom and autonomy over one's reproductive choices in one's body, it's, it's lower rates of teen pregnancies as well. So much of our investment in the now and in the future of tomorrow really does come back to, what will we commit to going forward around early education and care?
That's such an interesting point about the, about the military. Do you know when that program started for the military? Like, how long has it been functioning for?
It's, was, the legislation passed in 1989 and then the program has been functional since essentially the early 90s.
Wow, so 30 years.
Yeah, and I, but I also think what's exciting about it as a potential blueprint is it was stood up and sort of, you know, it's like this period of time, right? You don't have to go all the way back to the, to the 60s, right? The, the different public programs that we stood up as part of the War on Poverty. We can say, this is something we built in the here and now. How can we translate that in real time into something that's going to benefit our generation, the generation that comes after us?
It's really interesting. I see lots of good questions coming in. I'm going to take the moderator's privilege and ask a couple more and then we'll, and then we'll shift to everybody asking great questions. I want to talk a little bit about schools. So I have a daughter in K1. For those people who aren't from Boston who are joining us, that's essentially pre-K in the Boston Public School System. I know, Counselor Wu, you also have a son in K1. And the teachers at my daughter's school and her school have just been extraordinarily wonderful. They've been so accommodating. I was really impressed with the way BPS rolled out free meals to make sure that kids were able to eat and the, I think it was 20,000 Chromebooks that were distributed. I thought that was really extraordinary. And that said, working and being my daughter's teacher is, is not realistic. I mean, it is not possible in my family. As hard as we have tried, you know, they just respond differently to a parent. And so I just keep thinking, if it's hard for me, when I'm able to stay home and there are two parents who, you know, are, are in it together, what is it like for hourly workers? What is it like for essential workers? And I'm curious, I want to hear from both of you, and maybe I'll start with you, Counselor Wu, about what you think some of the solutions are for, for kids to prevent them from falling behind and really creating this huge achievement gap.
Yeah, I mean, we have a sense of what the data looks like in terms of which students are logging in and able to access the Zooms and, and remote learning. And it's exactly what you might expect, very stark disparities by income, by race. Essentially, all of the pre-existing inequities deepened through COVID. And so, you know, I think there's an ongoing discussion about what elements of what we're being forced to do now, were actually things that we should and could have been doing all along that we should continue to do, you know, such as providing technology to every family, really going the extra mile to make sure that everyone has a Chromebook and affordable, free internet access at home, training for our teachers to be able to use these technologies. But there's certainly a lot that we will have to assess when, when we're able to return to what school will look like in, in the new normal. And much of that is that, you know, it's just simply not possible to expect that every family is going to make every data point that, that we are used to judging as what education means. That for a lot of families right now, the most important data points are around food access and housing stability and mental health and wellness. So how are we ensuring that families are first of all, stable in this moment? And then that we're able to establish those connections and keep checking in on academics and learning?
And to, to sort of consider the, the zero to five landscape is how do we, again, thinking about investments in the immediate and in the future, provide, you know, birth-to-vive providers, centers, networks with resources that allow them to have in-house capacity to meet the full scope needs of children and families? So what, you know, sort of pre-COVID looked like, right? Was in, in many cases, a center had kind of financial resources to, to sustain their teaching staff, not necessarily to also have somebody on staff who, you know, whose job was dedicated to child and families' health, wellbeing, economic security. So you were asking a teacher to teach and be a mental health provider and a parent, you know, empowerment coach and a social worker all at the same time. As we look towards what families are experiencing now and are likely to be, you know, recovering from for some time, is providing the, the birth-to-five space with the resources it will need to invest in, in children and in their home environment. So right as, as folks have been losing their jobs, have been laid off, maybe facing increased housing insecurity, what resources can we be giving centers to be able to connect family with resources, help to identify and, and address needs? We know that very young children are resilient, but that maintaining that resilience really means making sure that we're taking care of their families and investing in, in those children's home environments. So I guess a, a plug to say that whatever we're not able to provide right now in this moment, we should be preparing to provide our birth-to-five system with so that they can be part of the solution. Meeting food, you know, needs, needs for material goods and connections with, with housing security options. I think we can expect to be a very, very real element of childcare providers' work over the next, you know. I don't even know what, like, time barometer to use anymore, so I'll say months to years ahead.
Yeah, what does time even mean these days? One of the things, this is my last question, then I'm going to open it up. One of the things that I am really terrified about is what reopening the state, you know, obviously in stages, but what reopening the state looks like without childcare in place and without schools being open. So I, I'm curious, Counselor Wu, what you're hearing about, what the city's working on? Lauren, what you're hearing about other policy initiatives? I mean, I know that's the thing that I am just up at three o'clock in the morning worried about, like, how on earth do we function? How do we go back to work if our kids aren't getting care?
It's, it's not, it's not going to be possible. I think it's a short answer. And many of us are pushing to make sure that childcare and, and the school infrastructure is a central part of those plans. We need providers at the table as those, those plans are being hashed out and not just folks who are, are, you know, from certain sectors of business, but people who will be directly administering that care. I, I, it's been a topic that many of us on the council have been going back and forth and back and forth on is, you know, the timeline is still a little bit cloudy, but there are certain things that we know we will have to figure out at whatever point schools do open up, for schools and childcare do open up. For example, there will need to be a very clear public health component of it, whether it's temperature checks or protocols for when an individual's school building might need to be closed again or the district overall, depending on where we are with testing and contact tracing at that point. The key to everything is really knowing where the virus has spread to and, and being able to have a sense of containing that. And unfortunately, we have been very far behind, thanks to the President, with being ready on the capacity to produce those tests and, and to have those preparations in place. I think the other big piece to keep in mind is that, you know, we're thinking about what might happen next school year, but between now, you know, whenever school is officially quote-unquote over June something, between now and when next school year is supposed to start, that is still an eternity for families and for young people. As summer camps have been canceled, as a lot of summer jobs programs are, you know, tentative or even gone now. So we've really been trying to appeal to employers to think about how you can provide remote internship experiences, keep our young people engaged. We have seen an uptick of violence in, in certain communities and we want to make sure that we're giving our young people every opportunity in this very stressful, uncertain time to keep developing and learning and contributing and making money for their families. So that piece, you know, kind of how we wrap around students and families overall isn't just about the technical school year, but every day in between then too.
Yeah.
And I think that what I would comment on is it is very, very scary to think about reopening without childcare availability. However, as we look to reopen childcare to then support reopening of the economy, we have to be incredibly thoughtful about how we approach that and not, you know, sort of make it an afterthought. Rather, we have to get ahead of it and plan for childcare reopening to make sure that we are doing so in a way that is safe for educators. And to Michelle's point, making sure that those educators are at the table to inform both, you know, what safety means to them, but also then to say, here are the challenges that we're going to face when it comes to trying to socially distance a two-year-old who won't keep the mask on. Here's what it's going to cost us to procure the PPE that we know we're going to need. And it's probably going to take more staff capacity in order to just frankly, run the operations of, of keeping this going just for safety's sake. So, so again, not to always bring it back to the money, but the, the sector is going to need significant resources in order to open in a safe manner for educators and for children. And second, then how do we build a stable sector going forward so that we don't reopen childcare just to see it sort of fall over on its side three months later because we didn't provide it with frankly, just again, sort of the operational funds that it needs? And the, the childcare sector, right, is like a school, is going to have fixed costs. So, you know, the building, right? Again, kind of procuring different material goods, the salaries of their teachers. However, the, the business model of childcare is dependent on essentially family membership. So if you, if we can expect enrollment to one, be reduced based on public health standards, that if you used to have 20 children in a classroom, maybe you'll now only be able to have 10. So you could be missing 10 kids' worth of revenue. That puts you in a financially unstable position. And then if we also, you know, are predicting that some families may be reticent to send their children back to group care settings, then you also have, you know, volatility in enrollment over time. So we need to stabilize the revenue source that these childcare providers have so that we don't ask them to stand up their business, reopen it without providing them with any of the infrastructure that they need to remain solvent, to remain strong, to be able to offer high-quality programming that again, is, is safe for their children and for their educators.
Well, and that just speaks to shifting this from something individual families deal with to really making it a public good. I mean, this is, we all win if this is a public good. And I, I'm, I'm, I could keep talking to the two of you for a long time about this. I'm going to open it up for questions. I'm going to ask Kate to pop on the screen. We probably have, if I push it, six minutes for questions. Kate, jump in.
Hi, um, thank you all so much for that conversation. I don't have kids yet and I knew childcare was expensive, but had no idea. We had a lot of great questions. We want to start, one, we have a question from someone who was one of the people who started Parents United for childcare in the eighties, so a breadth of experience here, asking about a structural issue of facilities and after COVID, seeing parents and adults working remotely more often and how that will affect the future of employer-based childcare.
So I, I'll, I'll defer to Lauren's expertise on, on this one. I'll, I'll just note that one piece we've been trying to push in the city is a small requirement that if a new building of a certain scale is to be constructed in Boston, there is a requirement that there needs to be an evaluation of whether onsite childcare will go there. It more often than not, doesn't result in the childcare actually being constructed, but something that I've been pushing for, you know, City Hall has had an onsite childcare facility since, I think, nineteen eighty-three, I want to say. Mayor, Mayor Flynn started that and it's been a very important staple for so many city workers. As we're thinking about whether people are going to continue coming into work, I think there will need to be much more flexibility in those models. And again, it wouldn't be an issue. It would be, we would be free to structure childcare around people's real lives and schedules and where they might, where parents might be on any given day if centers weren't so dependent on every single dollar coming in from families to be able to continue operation. So if we can free some of the financial side and, and fund childcare closer to how we fund public education, for example, that opens up a whole lot more possibilities in terms of actually meeting families' needs.
And I, I think, you know, then sort of two, two parts or two sides to this. One is, you know, as Michelle was saying, facilities being one of those fixed costs. So, so needing to address that as, as a kind of structural investment going forward. Facility is also as playing a role in quality of programming. So not just kind of stick your finger in the, the hole in the dam around facilities, but then also providing funds to continuously improve them. And then, you know, it's, it's a little bit separate, but, but still related, the future of employer-based childcare, I think, sort of remains to be seen. As companies are figuring out how to come back online, will we actually see them be more likely to set up employer-based childcare for their? will we actually see them be more likely to set up employer-based childcare for their employees now having recognized, you know, the the direct relationship between I have childcare, therefore I come to work, versus I don't have childcare, therefore I cannot come to work? So again, that remains to be seen, but I wouldn't be surprised if these are are some of the approaches taken during the reopening and recovery phases, if employers invest in this, whether that's just sort of short-term and backup, or if they consider this, you know, a more permanent investment that they want to make in their workforce.
Kate, I think we have time for at least one or two more.
Great. Another question is, you know, besides working parents, there are parents and caregivers that require childcare unrelated to work. If they have caretaking responsibilities, disability, experiencing homelessness, et cetera, how do we work to ensure access for them, especially given everything going on right now?
So the answer is yes, childcare plays an incredibly important role in the lives of all families, whether parents are in the workforce or not. And I think that, you know, some of this goes into the the sort of process in this. I'm out of my depths in terms of, you know, kind of specific knowledge, but how we prioritize having children in childcare programs based on, you know, what their life circumstances may be like, how we prioritize making spaces available to children as different programs open up so that we ensure that children do not, are not denied care and early learning opportunities based on the the work status of their of their parent or the housing status, recognizing that those are likely to be, you know, volatile, unstable, changing for the next few months as as this country, you know, starts to kind of stand itself back up on two feet. And I think this has been an equity issue for a long time that this sector has grappled with based on children who are eligible for subsidies. Part of your, as a parent or caregiver, your eligibility is based on your employment status and whether you are looking for work. And I know that there's a lot of work being done in the field to try to to move away from that because we don't want children cycling in and out based on their their parent's employment status. And that's an equity issue that we should certainly be fighting for as we hopefully rebuild a stronger sector as we work to reopen it.
And and just such a reality of of what we're asking people to do when they are trying to look for housing or work. Several years ago, when we were celebrating four women serving on the city council at the same time, you know, and we're still very lucky today that we have eight for for the first time in Boston's history. But a few years ago, hitting four was another high watermark for the Boston City Council not too long ago. And so one item that the four of us counselors took on together was to really dig in on childcare as an issue that we each connected with and wanted to move forward. So I distinctly remember one of our sessions was focused on families experiencing homelessness and the incredibly powerful stories of parents explaining that it 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 just is not possible to even be thinking about where you could find your your next stable, you know, roof over your head if you're having to worry about childcare and and what where your your toddler will go. So those vouchers, that support was transformational for for people who are looking for stability for their families. I think also about not just work status, not just physical, you know, geographic locations, but also time, hours that that folks are working and the need for parents who are working, you know, so-called non-traditional work hours, whether it's the overnight shift at hospitals or, you know, the building trades and work sites being on a different schedule than a nine-to-five, making sure that there's provisions for families in childcare there too.
And the last plug I'll just put in is is going back to the child as well. So incredible, you know, brain science and longitudinal research, many of it coming out of our home state of Massachusetts, showing that, you know, parental employment instability or housing insecurity or periods of homelessness can be traumatic experiences in a child's life that has impact on brain development, but something that can offset it. Something that can build resiliency and and coping skills in children is participation in early learning programs. So ensuring that they, you know, children, all children have access to early learning programs, particularly that children in more vulnerable circumstances are then able to stay in those early learnings, early learning programs when, you know, different elements of their home environment may be changing rapidly is critical. And again, goes to, this is a collective good and therefore a public investment that we need to be making in our children and our our families and our parents.
Well, being mindful of time, I'm going to wrap it up. This has been such an interesting conversation. It's so nice to spend an hour with two really brilliant friends and colleagues. And so thank you for taking time out of your schedule and for doing whatever it is you did with your kids for this hour. I can hear mine yelling outside the door. I'm going to beat it down in a second. If you enjoyed this week's conversation, we really encourage you to share your thoughts on social media, tag us. You can use the hashtag Pro Choice Check-in. Also, if you have ideas about other speakers, shoot us an email. We are all ears. There'll be links in the chat box for our volunteer list, so please sign up for that. I also really wanted to thank everybody on this call who donated to NARAL Pro Choice Massachusetts on Giving Tuesday. We exceeded our $5,000 digital fundraising goal, and we were so grateful for that. And just a quick announcement about our next Pro Choice Check-in. We are going to move to holding these Pro Choice Check-ins bi-weekly, meaning that the next one will take place on May twenty-sixth. And we will announce our special guest speaker closer to that date. Thank you both for making time today. This has been such a great conversation. And I'm so glad to be clearly articulating the link between reproductive freedom and childcare. So thank you for that. Thanks for everybody for joining us, and we will see you in two weeks. Take care.